If I may have your attention, please. The tallest meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special town meeting for the town of Millville this 27th day of June 2018. We will be doing a pledge of allegiance and right afterwards we'll be having a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women overseas and at home and also for our first responders. So you be kind enough to stand and face the flag while we recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence for our men and women in service here and abroad and our first responders, please. Have a seat. Again, I'm going to make the announcement. If you are a registered voter in the town of Millville, you would have received a yellow card just like this. If you did not receive one and came through and you're an observer, please come down to the very front row, okay? We want to make sure that only registered voters are voting, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to set some ground rules before we begin. Tonight, we're here for one article and one article only. And we're here to either approve or disapprove the education budget adjustment. We're not here to talk about a budget, okay? We're only here to approve this or disapprove this article here. That's it. I will not allow any discussion on any budget. We have not been presented a proposed balanced budget. That will be done and given to you at a special town meeting in the fall at a date yet to be determined. Once that budget has been published and out there, we'll take questions when we go to it on the warrant. We'll discuss each line item, each section of it, as we always do. Tonight, we're not discussing a budget. Please work with me on that. If you bring up the budget, I will shut you down, okay? I know this has spurred a lot of interest. So having said that, I want to cover one other thing. A question was proposed to me tonight, and if you look at your warrant, you'll see the article for the educational budget adjustment. And underneath it, you'll see an explanation. Underneath that, you'll see that the board of selectmen recommended five to zero. You'll see the finance committee recommended zero to four, okay? I want to explain that because someone asked me why the difference. I have been instructed that the board of selectmen voted five to zero to place this article on the warrant and for you to be able to come here tonight and vote on it, discuss it, and vote on it. The recommendation of the finance committee is nothing more than their recommendation as a finance committee about spending the money. It has nothing to do with putting the article on the warrant. Theirs is a money recommendation only, okay? All right. Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, will you introduce your board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Bring it real close to your mouth. Real close and make sure it's turned on.
Okay. My name is Joe Reposa. I'm chairman and select board. To my left, immediate left, is Jennifer Dean-Wing. To her left is Erica Blake, selectman, and to her left is Thomas Who. At the other end, the far end, is Andrew Alward, select board. And we have Jennifer Callahan, our town administrator.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, would you introduce your committee, please?
Yeah, I'm Paul Willett, chairman of the Finance Committee. This is Aubrey Bono and Mike DeJacco.
And this lovely leader right here is our town clerk, Diane Lockwood, okay? All right. Everybody ready? Article. Physical year 2019, education budget adjustment to see if the town will vote to amend the physical year 2019 operating and/or capital budgets as adopted under Article 10 of the May 14, 2018 annual town meeting by reducing certain budget line items and/or to transfer from available funds the sum of $39,362 to supplement the line item entitled Education-BMR School Assessment or take any other action thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Article 1, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from available funds the sum of $39,362 to supplement the line item entitled Education-BMR School Assessment.
Our take? No? Is there a second? Who's second is? Raise your hand. Your name?
Kara Kirby, $8 Court.
I can't, we can't hear you back there.
Kara Kirby, $8 Court.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am. Anyone else want to have a question? Come up to the microphone and line up, please.
The school committee, I think, will first.
Yep, we got her.
It should have been them first. It's their honor.
We, yeah.
Erin Bonaco, I am the vice chair of the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee, and I am also 11 Albert Drive, Millville.
Also, make sure you're real close to that mic, please.
First, I would like to ask if our town administrator could just verify, clarify for everyone here the legal advice that we did ask for and receive based on our current budget status.
I think the moderator outlined that, that tonight we're just dealing with the article related to the additional assessment that's being asked. If people are understanding and have attended our annual town meeting, we do have a budget, it's just not balanced. And that is why the moderator rightly spoke of the fact that we will be balancing as we go through the months because there are many reductions and/or potential savings as we go through, like any other year. That balanced budget will be presented to the public, and it will be presented in the fall. And so therefore, there shouldn't be any misgivings that we don't have a budget. I know for a fact I have a budget because I'm sending out layoff notices and you people are also transitioning not to have municipal trash anymore. So that is something for people who aren't familiar with the process, we do have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So I just want to give some background to how the school committee comes to their numbers and in the process that we live out each year. I know for a lot of people here, this is your first year going through this process, and it might look new to you that the school is asking for extra money. This is in fact the third year, maybe fourth year in a row, that we've been sitting here on a late day in June matching numbers to get our kids what they need. So I'm going to give you a little bit of a review. I'm just going to follow my notes so I don't miss anything. Our budget process starts in November, and that is when our administrators are putting their needs together. They meet with the superintendent, items are discussed, plans are made, and these needs are put, are worked on and used, they use our strategic plan and school improvement plans, working towards a working document that becomes our budget each year. In early January, typically administrators come to us and present their needs. Our business manager along with the superintendent work diligently to put these needs into the working document and create the budget. In late February, early March, we typically have an open hearing and present our budget to the community. This is typically not well-attended, but is certainly open to the public, to our community leaders, to staff and to parents. On that night, you would typically hear our needs based on, our needs-based budget. We then move forward through the process as we wait for state funding numbers to come through. Typically, 10 days later, we will certify a budget number, and those numbers are delivered to our towns showing them what their financial responsibility is for the school for the following school year. That is early March. These numbers typically include the state minimum contribution, which is a state dictated number. It typically includes exclusionary costs, transportation, and any additional contribution being sought to fund the school budget. These numbers are divided between our two towns by population. The ratio is based on current students enrolled from each town. Right now, we're sitting at about 73% Blackstone, 27% Millville. That does mean that any dollar put into our school from our towns, every dollar, 70 cents of it, is from Blackstone and 30 cents is from all of us sitting here today. Each year, when this number is first certified, our budgets are sent to our towns. We continuously have conversation with both towns' fincoms, both sets of selectmen and town administrators, sometimes almost on a daily basis. We do have the ability to recertify our budget based on feedback from the towns. We know the towns work together. We had a joint meeting in early May prior to both of our town meetings, and it was on that day that we basically knew the number we would be working with to certify our budget.
How much more do you have there?
I'm going to give you a full picture of our school budget. That is the budget we're speaking of tonight.
No, 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 no. Nope, we're not. You're not going to give us a full picture of the school budget?
It's the school. We're only talking about school tonight.
We are not discussing the budget. You can speak in favor of approving the article if you want to, but we're not going to go into the budget. I put that out there at the very beginning.
There's been a lot of confusion on people, assuming we were asking for more money, thinking there was an override. We have followed this process for many years. I was trying to make it clear that there is nothing different with the school budget this year, override or not override. That was my point, but I can stop there and I can continue to let you know why you need to support the $39,000.
I'm going to limit you to about one more minute, okay?
I am here as a representative of the school committee tonight. Our superintendent is absent, and he would typically be given the time to explain the needs of this money.
Within limits that I set. I'm going to give you one more minute, one more minute, okay?
On May 30th and May 24th, we presented our 1.5 million in cuts to meet the number that was, that we were working within in the early month of May. Our reductions this year already include 18 staff members. This is three retirements that will not be replaced, 11 layoffs, and four new reading specialists that were desperately needed for our elementary students. This is presenting the teachers in Millville with a model that hasn't ever been in this district before. We will combine several grade levels with one teacher in the classroom and bring our class sizes to no lower than 25 students. In Blackstone, they will see class sizes of 28, 29, and 30. A full team is being combined in our middle school. We are unable to hire a desperately needed adjustment counselor that our high school needed. We've already reduced an English and a history staff member from the high school, not to mention foreign language, which was reduced to one language offering.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
I do have one, I do have one more important thing to say.
Five seconds.
During those meetings that I just mentioned, the committee did work very hard to discuss where any money, any additional funding coming into us would be spent, and it was all dedicated to staff. We had a motion on the floor, so any money that comes in will alleviate some of these cuts we've had to make. That's typically a question that's asked here, is where is the money going to be spent?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your cooperation. Next.
Jackie Lima, 33 Allard Court. I went to the finance committee meeting, which is, to the best of my knowledge, the only public meeting that either board has had since the override has failed. I posed a question there, and I think it's most appropriate to either ask the town administrator or the board of selectmen through you, Mr. Moderator. And my question was, the article as written that was presented to the warrant was done prior to the override fail. It specifically addresses Article 10 of the May 14, 2018 annual town meeting budget as adopted. So we know that that budget has not been adopted. Is this still a legal article that's been reviewed by town council to vote on tonight in lieu of the fact that that budget is no longer adopted because two and a half failed?
This article has been reviewed by town council, and it is fine.
After the two and a half failed?
This article has been reviewed by town council, and it's fine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Ann Donacor, 73 Thayer Street. One question. Knowing that the override did not go through, the school does need this money, but where is it going to come from?
We're not discussing the budget.
I'm not asking, I'm asking where is it coming from? Is it someone else's job?
We're not discussing, it is not going to be discussed where the money's coming from. It says in the article.
Well, I think we all deserve that.
That explains in the article.
It's going to come from taxation.
Next.
Norman Gamash, 31 Harkettus Road. I guess, Norman Gamash, 31 Harkettus Road. I'd like to know why the finance committee voted four to nothing to, not to support this article.
In the interest of the fact that we-
Move the mic real close. It's just not picking up.
How's that?
There we go.
In the interest of the fact that the override did not pass and we were already facing a structural deficit of close to $250,000, we didn't think it was prudent to add to that deficit.
Okay. I agree with that, and I think it's about time that the finance committee in the town take a stand against the school department's budget. Forever. We've raped the town to provide the school system with their money. And I think it's time we stopped doing that.
I really couldn't hear everything you had to say, Norman.
I'm going to respond to that really quickly.
It seems that the chairman heard you.
For the last three years, the finance committee has not recommended additional monies to the school after the original pass-through of the budget. So we have been taking a stand, and unfortunately, we've been overridden by the townspeople.
Okay. Any other questions that want to come up? Any more discussion? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Donna Tringali. I live on 12 Afonso Way in Millville. I'm in four, I am four, voting for the additional funding for the school budget. Every one of us in this room, no matter how young or old, has benefited from support from their community at some point in their life to support a well-rounded, fully-funded, functioning school system. I hate to think of sending my child now to a school where they're experimenting with classrooms that are two grades blended together, where there are nearly 30 children in a classroom in grades, first grade and second grade and upwards. Every one of us, think about it, every one of us, you may have grandchildren, you may have just had a new baby, you may have a baby on the way. Every one of us, at some point in our life, has benefited from a public school system. It is our responsibility to our future children, to our grandchildren, that we support this. And I hope that there are those of you who believe as I do that it's important to vote for this. You know, we're living in a town now that we have, we're still paying high taxes, we have no trash, we will probably not have streetlights, we have no senior center, we have no library. Where are our children going to learn? But in our schools, please, I ask all of you to seriously consider voting yes for this. And that's all I have to say. I support it.
Anyone else wants to come up, have a question or a concern? Having seen none, I'm going to call for a vote.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call for secret ballot.
A second.
All right. Oh, you were sat there, huh? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Sit down. All right. I'm going to have our Madam Town Clerk prepare, and then she will come up and instruct you on how we're going to do this, folks, okay? Hi, our town clerk. It's like we're going to say exactly what instructions are so you can vote.
Okay, so everybody that came in that's a registered voter has one of these yellow cards. So what we're going to do, we have baskets here that are pink, and what you're going to do is come down with your yellow card. You're going to get a purple voting ticket. On one side, it says yes. On the other side, it says no. If you are voting in favor of the article, you take your yes, tear it in half, take the yes, put it in the yellow basket, the pink basket with the yellow sign from them, and then throw away the no into this waste basket right there. This is trash. If you're voting no, voting against it, you take the no, put it in the pink basket, and then throw the yes in the waste basket. Pretty easy. So you need to come down with your yellow ticket so you're not going to get a purple voting ticket. Okay? Everybody all set with that? Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to start at the back of the room and come down, throw away the one you don't want, and go back up and around. Okay? Thank you.